Good afternoon. This is the Wednesday, June 20, 2012, the meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. And we have established a quorum. And is there anyone who plans to address the commission? Please, you can just sit probably. Do you just promise to tell the truth as best you know it?
I do.
Okay, good. Disposition of the minutes, I have to abstain since I wasn't here the last meeting. Paul, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they look good to me, so I believe that we accept the minutes of June 6th, 2012.
Could you clarify one thing differently?
Go ahead.
Could you say, is it the case that it's required that they do this six inch line or north of the street? You know, I was looking at it and I think quite recently.
The dialogue is such, if my memory is correct, that we would leave it up to a conversation between Valantor and Andy on what was appropriate. Last conversation I had with Andy, I thought it was going to be a six inch line.
Monday at staff, he clarified that it would be six inch from the curb out. Interior, they, you know, they elect to put in four inch, then any clogs and what have you, that will be on the property. So it's protecting the city's infrastructure, the public infrastructure.
I was concerned as I was reading it, I'm sure you've got your little position list that you take.
Okay. At the staff meeting also, we mentioned that they would have to require the cleanouts, appropriate cleanouts, so if there is a problem.
They have to clean it. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure we can vote on the minutes because they'll both abstain.
Oh.
Move the table.
I guess we're table in a minute, so we're not having it. Okay.
So we've done that, we're gonna put that off to the next meeting. I guess we can go into the cases. Number 12 dash 07, 22 West Stimson, the Wasserman Group. It's a Title 41 project. John, do you want to just catch everybody up?
I can, for those of you who weren't here last month, or last meeting, I should say. This is a recent mission of the 22 West Stimson project of Bellavino site. The project has been redesigned to have a commercial space on the first floor. It is in a B3, and they did reduce the number of parking spaces off those Montrose from nine to five, and they do have, they did put parking underneath the building to the rear. Commercial, multifamily, mixed use, residential on the second floor. This is the staff report I should be adding, it was okay. Front setback is three foot. Again, it'll appear close to the street, but it does meet code. Rear setback, a minimum of 12 feet or 30 foot is required. They did receive a variance through the BZA on May the 8th, that does a butt in our one zone. Screening is provided between the rear parking lot and the parking, the R1 zone to the rear of it. Side yard setbacks were both okay. The height of the structure is okay. Lot coverage was okay. Parking, 18 required for residential, two required for commercial, that is what they have provided. But myself and Andy Stone, Director of Engineering and Public Works, have a few issues with that that I'll discuss here. At the last meeting, we had questions about bicycle location, dumpster location. I assume that will be on the prints, I have yet to see them, I believe they're here today. They went through shade tree commission Thursday evening, did receive their approval through them. One of the things they did request was for some small shade trees to be put in the right of way along the stairs to kind of create a, pollinator trees going down the steps, coming from Montrose to Stimson. The lighting package is okay as well. Athens Fire Department, they had some, T Troxel had some issues that again could be answered by Mr. Or RVC's office that are here today. His concerns were the access looks really tight to get into the rear area. Will the building be fire suppressed? I believe it is, but I'll let him speak to that. Lock box, commercial space, what it'll be, which we do not know at this time. Fire alarm system, fire lane around the building, enunciator panel, and fire hydrant location was okay. Athens Police Department had no issues. City Planner Paul Oak had no issues. And Athens Public Works Director Andy Stone did have a few comments that's attached in your packet there. Most of them, he felt were not anything that wouldn't be an issue, but to go back to the parking. ST1, the first note on his, where he, on this review sheet that you have this time, the stuff that is in, it's italicized, is what he, trying to, was, get it right here before I say it, was in there on December 28th on the first go around, and the stuff that's not italicized is what he's added this time. So even on the September, December 28th version, he did have some concerns about to clarify the curb cut and any access to the upper parking lot. He wants a pavement detail in the public right of way and the stairs connection. I do have some information that he sent over from the, and I can pass this out through, what do we call it, the Professional Civil Engineering Reference Manual in regards to parking lots and access to get in and out. The drive to the parking spaces at the rear, up in the upper lot is only 11 foot behind the parking spaces, and there will be a fence there, so we have concerns how a car is going to back out and then onto Montrose, or are they going to have to back all the way down Montrose? So he'd like to have that clarified a little bit more before we can really, he can really move forward on this. And I too had some of the same concerns about inside the building, the distance of parking spaces, the distance between parking spaces inside the building. Our code, and I have that here, the minimum width requirement for the city is only 10 foot, so they are meeting code, but there is a section in the off-street parking that says there shall be adequate provision for ingress and egress to all parking spaces as determined by the zoning administrator. So with Andy's input and what we've looked at, we both have concerns about the ingress and egress to the parking area, to the rear specifically. The underneath parking inside the building, I think is doable, it'll be tight, but the rear really has a concern that I think Andy wants answered, really before any approvals could be issued, overall or whatever, so.
Talking about this part?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you and Mr. Stone have these concerns with the original project as far as the parking?
That's why I say, he noted it before, yes. I guess we just really never studied it in detail up until this past couple of days, and we were looking at it specifically this morning, so.
So, but all these portions that Mr. Stone has written in that are italicized, he didn't have these concerns with the first project?
The portions that are italicized were on the previous report. They were on there before.
Okay.
So he did have this concern with the original lot as well.
But I'm just talking about in terms of the other things that I see in terms of water, sanitary sewer, streets, there seems to be more additions.
I think just a little bit more clarity. Everything just about has got something that was italicized, and he just added a little bit more to, if you look. So most of this stuff was on the report from the previous building as well.
Right.
And if it's italicized and cross-stricken, then it's one that's been dealt with, and he's okay with it now, so.
Before we open it up here, can I go ahead and ask for a representative from RVC? Is there an RVC representative or Mr. Wasserman here?
I represent RVC Architects. My name is Jeremy Biddinger. I'm an architect.
Do you want to address some of the issues that Mr. Paskey brought up?
A few of the things I can address. I also noticed, for instance, on ST2, the additional note that he says that the drawings submitted, you know, that the detail is acceptable, even though it's not stricken out. But he does say that that detail is acceptable. I had revised some plans for John Valantor that I assumed that he had sent in, but the drawings that I see in front of me here are not the most recent ones. I have brought a couple of small, you know, like half-size versions. I don't know if I can, I didn't bring enough copies for everybody, sorry, but it does address some of these concerns. And I'd also at this point additionally like to say that we have hired RJM Engineering to design stormwater systems that meet the city's code and the city requirements, and they're also dealing with the sanitary and the water. So we do have that in process, they're working on designing those for us.
Right.
But there are some issues. Let me go through. Now, the curb cuts in the entrance from Montrose, I show some dimensions, but it's still not really detailed out. I have my own concerns about access and how we get in there, and I just have to look at, and RJM is also doing some layout work for us back there and seeing how we can get proper access into the upper parking lot. We did revise with these drawings, I have, I want to look at them too there. Typically, the code allows either a nine by 20-foot parking space or a 10 by 18. With this additional layout, the way we've set the building on the site, it allows for the shorter but wider parking space, so these are now 10 foot by 18 foot, so it does gain us a few more feet in the back. And we were also able to pull it off of the face of the building a little bit, so it allows us a little bit of a backing radius, you can see there towards the back. I don't know if that fully addresses the access, but it does gain us a few more feet there. Additionally, I have some coded notes, the UCC circled numbers. Item number seven, for example, shows where the new sidewalk is to be repaired, where the existing curb cuts are. I think that was one of the issues that Andy Stone had before, also is where that was going to happen. Note number four, that again addresses the double cleanout that Mr. Stone wanted. We have that there, and then just like his note says, to coordinate with the Athens City Sewer Supervisor. But again, RJM Engineering is also doing a full design of these items for us as well. Trash enclosure, bicycle racks, those have also been shown on this, on the landscape plan, the one all the way to the right. We've slid, the setback that we're allowed is, actually, we're allowed zero setback, I think, but we've set the building back three feet. We've pulled the parking spaces as close to the property line as we can, and that allows us to put in our trash enclosure to the back there, and it's fully enclosed, behind the last parking space on the ground floor. And then in the landscape area in front of the building, we've, underneath the trees, we've put in the bicycle rack there that meets all the requirements. I think we had shown one before, but it wasn't, it didn't provide one space for every bed, so I think we actually have that now with the bike rack. I don't know if there are other items. I don't believe that the other items have been addressed at this point.
Mr. Paskey, did the, Chief Troxel, did he have, again, his concerns with the first project? No, it was good, basically, this is essentially the same footprint, isn't it?
I believe his concerns are pretty much the same as they were before. They're standard questions mostly. Fire suppression system, with this being mixed use, I think it's going to be fire suppressed.
Yes, the intent is it for to be fully sprinkled. Obviously, we haven't gotten into construction documents and gotten that design yet, but it is, the intention is that it'll be fully sprinkled building.
Everything else is pretty much the standard questions that we get answered when submitted with the building. I think his biggest concern again is the same thing with the access to the rear, that Andy's brought up, I'm bringing up, that we all have concerns with.
In your mind, is everything else fits within the code?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions from the commission?
No, it looks good.
John, is parking on the first floor, did they go to the, is it important to arrange for that?
No, they did not.
Okay, so it's a code question, it's a little bit, isn't it?
I thought they did go to the BZA.
For their rear yard setback.
Oh.
Essentially, they're going to put a business, 800 square feet in there as a business.
I can't, I was, I thought it said 600 some square.
600?
What's the number?
I think it's 800 square feet.
I can't read it, it's too small.
I think that's the elevation you're looking at.
Yeah, I believe it's 800 square feet.
Elevation 642.
Should be on the architectural plan, this one.
800 square feet plus or minus gross, 400 square feet of public space, so then half would be for, what, registers and storage, storeroom?
Right.
Yeah.
As far as the overall dimensions, the building is 40 feet wide. I don't have a dimension on the width of the space, but if it's 40 feet wide, then it would be 20 feet.
20 feet, yeah.
I didn't have to pull up my calculator either.
Paula, did you have any questions?
I'm concerned about the curb cuts. I also want to mention that not only this, will this appear close to the street, it will be close to the street, and it'll be very tall.
It'll look bigger than it is once this all gets done, because we've seen that before.
Similar to the Richland Avenue project, Sun and Fund.
Yes.
About the same?
Height-wise. Maybe a little taller.
Maybe a little taller.
One thing we had not submitted to this point was exterior elevations, and John did draw some exterior elevations. I forgot I can bring these out. I think I only have two copies, or three copies, but they are full size.
Be nice to see them.
I'll take them up.
Okay, grab one, we'll grab one. Thanks.
The height still complies with code.
Well, I was just told that it was not any taller, I mean, based on the old ones that did. It was 43 feet, eight and three, or 43 feet, eight inches tall, three and a half stories, and you were allowed to have 49 feet. Excuse me, 45 feet, and it was 43 feet, eight inches, so you're allowed to have 45 feet.
Okay, so this is, when it says east, this is the east side. This would be south facing Stimson.
Yes, the south elevation will be the elevation that faces on Stimson Avenue, correct.
And this would be west looking west.
I should also say, when John was working on the elevations, he's revised the entryway to the apartments a little bit, he's pushed the stairs back into the building more, and so we've lost one of the parking spaces that's in the building, but then since the stairs are no longer in that space in front, we've moved, we've put an additional parking space out front, and what that allows us to do is have a separate room on the ground floor, accessed from that garage, where we can put all of our sprinkler risers and all of those items that Mr. Stone was asking for, and noted also.
Do you feel the plans are complete? I get the feeling from you that there's still some, shall we say, tweaking?
There is still some work that needs to be done, yes, but I think as far as the intent and the overall, well, the overall intent, everything's there. The biggest issue is still the Montrose Avenue entrance, and how we get in and out there.
Mayor, you have any?
I'm trying to remember if Montrose has curbs on it, I don't think it does, does it?
It's, especially at this end, because the piece of property directly behind ours is a parking lot, so it's really just a lot of surface pavement back there. There's no curbs, and there's a lot of different pavement surfaces, it's kind of rough back there. But we do, obviously, we know we need to tie in, and how we tie in with the stairs and the sidewalk, and tie in with the existing paving. But it is a really kind of a mishmash of different pavements that are up above off of that area.
Okay, looking at this west elevation, that's an overhang in the back, is that where the, that will ridge out to, I guess why I'm, I guess that question I have is why am I looking at this gap at the?
The big blank space, that's where the retaining wall is, where that parking is going to sit in front, so you won't see that on the elevation.
Okay.
Stairs down.
Okay, that's where the stairs are?
Right.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No.
Is this something that, you know, that the commission is concerned primarily, if I am understanding things correctly, about the Montrose ingress egress, as it were? Is that something that you would rather see in the plans here before you make a decision?
I would. The other thing is, do you feel that, have you had a conversation, I don't know if the Fire Chief has reached out to you or not to see about access, but this will be a sprinkled building, correct?
Yes.
I heard that.
No, we have not.
He still wants to be able to get his ladder, or whatever needed.
Right, right. No, I have not had any conversations with Chief Troxel, and as far as I know, John Valantor has not had conversations with him. All we have is the response that we got just the other day, that has his comments on it. So we have not met with him or talked with him.
Is there anyone else who would like to approach the commission at this time for any comments? Could you state your name and address, please?
Ron Lewis, 15 Rust Hills Drive. As you know, I am opposed to this project because I don't believe it fits with our code. Athens Code 230405, B2 Business District, which is the acceptable language for B3, says the first floor should deal with any convenience business, general business, services establishment, subject to the following general conditions. One, residential uses are permitted only on the second story and above. I consider parking for tenants to be part of the residential use. Therefore, despite all the money and time that's being spent on all of this planning, I still believe the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals has a major issue which has to be dealt with before any of these plans can go forward. My understanding of city code is that the zoning board is the only group that can grant a variance, and in my opinion, it would require a variance because this is a non-conforming use. So we're back to the same issue that we've dealt with now for six months. I just hate to see all these people spending all this time and money, and you waiting for another meeting for more plans, when the most fundamental issue has not been addressed. So I would like to see that addressed first, because if that, if you in fact find, or the zoning board finds, that this is in fact a violation, which I believe it is, then none of these plans are going to mean anything. And then Mr. Wasserman is going to have to decide to go with the original plan that you let him go with, or he's going to have to do something else.
Mr. Paskey, do you have any response on that?
Nope.
Can I ask Paul, in terms of overall intent, do you have any comment?
I do not. Project appears to meet code based on its zoning and based on everything in the report from a planning perspective. It's what we should probably expect to see coming on Stimson Avenue, or projects of this scale and scope. It's a neighborhood that's, has some buildings that are losing their useful life as far as for commercial corridors, and I think the demand is there based on the zoning, and this is what we should see. Based on the comprehensive plan and the Stimson Avenue plan and the Mill Street plan, it's, you know, more or less within line with them, I would say.
In terms of what the comprehensive plan calls for at this time, in terms of the height, the density, it still fits into, I guess, one of the more prominent members on the Comprehensive Review Committee, in fact, I think, has periodically come out in favor of more vertical approach to design in Athens.
Actually, if I remember the comprehensive plan, and I personally didn't visualize or even look at it as something I would want to see, was the idea of bringing the buildings closer to the curb. I was kind of surprised with that philosophy when it was put forward on the Stimson corridor in the comprehensive plan. Obviously, this is looking at and following that suit. In terms of the residential use in the first floor, we had this discussion about parking versus, you know, required parking versus businesses. Again, my view is that parking is not a business when it's required for residents. On the other hand, the presence of a residential, a business, to my mind, covers the requirement. I could say, we come down to proportions and percentages at times. I think the same thing occurs with R1s, with professional business or home businesses, there's certain square footage that's in the requirement that you can't take up so much space in our R1 zone, a residential house for a business. I look at it, and to my mind, that's a bleed through of a business into residential zone. But at the same time, the requirements we have is no residential, but, you know, unless somebody's going to live in their car, it's not residential. If it was solely for parking, I'd have a problem with that. The presence of a place for a business is, to my mind, covers the requirement, and the other one becomes an accessory activity on the first floor, and therefore not really a violation. At least that's my take on it. And I know that's a gray area, but that is what we have. To say it is not residential, misses a problem I had with the past configuration, is that it was all parking at the bottom, and therefore would break up the flow on Stimson. I only hope that we, they find a good business to go into that footage.
Well, I think too, that, you know, not every business is looking for gigantic floor space, that something, you know, of this size is actually perhaps even more desirable to especially smaller businesses, people who don't need as much of a traffic flow into their space. So again, in terms of offering an alternative size commercial space, this might be something that is also, I think, desirable. And, you know, I think that one, I think people have, on the commission have been concerned about, you know, is it easily leasable? You know, I think perhaps that something of this size is actually, you know, more so in terms of attracting more interest in filling that space.
I imagine it would be whatever they charge for rent would make the difference.
I think that was, makes the difference, but, you know, I think that, you know, the market plays a part in that as well. I think that the general tone that I'm sensing here is that, while I think you have a lot of the information here that people wanted answered, I think there's still the concern about Montrose, and I don't, no, I'm just getting the sense that you're, no one's really ready to vote on this unless they see something a little bit more specific regarding your plans for the Montrose section there. You know, I do appreciate the fact that Mr. Wasserman has listened to the community, and that he's made a, I think, a legitimate attempt to find a common ground with people, but I do think that, you know, before the commission would vote on this, that it, just to make sure that the Montrose situation needs maybe a little more specificity to it before, you know, we would make a final vote. Is that?
Well, we could make a formal motion at this point.
Are you moving to approve on a condition, or are you?
Okay, how about this? I move to approve the Wasserman Group 22 West Stimson, conditional on a proper curb cut and configuration of the parking spaces on Montrose, off Montrose.
To play the devil's advocate, what if the reconfiguration results in the removal of a parking space? of a parking space?
Then, at that point, then it doesn't-
Then it doesn't conform to the-
It's a violation. Then it has to go get a variance. I think, right?
Reorder, they have room to put one more in. I thought that too.
You think?
Yeah. I mean, not back there, but unfortunately, down that lower parking lot where they have that tree, a space could go in there.
I'm sorry.
On the lower lot where that tree is next to the building, there is room for a space. If they were to lose one up top, for example, if they had to put the ones up top at diagonal parking-
Okay.
Give a little bit more room, lose a space, then they do have room to add one more space in the lower lot, so.
There's probably been tighter spaces in Athens.
There are tight spaces in Athens.
People seem to find a way around it.
I guess I'm just still taking it back that it requires a curb cut. Could you explain why that is?
Opening permit, we just call it curb. Anytime you come in off of the street, or it's called a curb cut, but it just means permission to access the public right of way at that location. It could be by curb cut, it could be by an opening permit, it could be-
Well, right now, it's a free, I mean, it's free.
That's, that's still-
There's two curb cuts right now.
Terminology, we call it a curb cut, even though there's no curb. So it's just, it's, opening permit is basically what we're looking at. Andy's put it down as curb cut, but technically, it's an opening permit.
I think his concern, of course, is that it does get designated width, because his concern is always access control, even on small roads like-
I thought the width that was addressed.
Yes, it is.
Are you talking about the width as an opening?
Opening.
With an opening can't be greater than 20 feet, and our code does allow for minimum width of residential driveways and parking areas to be 10 feet. I've got it right here, Andy and I discussing that, and it's something that we may be coming to you someday soon about.
We need Transportation Access Management, I keep saying that. I mean, we have in the past approved on condition that they meet all the requirements of engineering and public works.
And that's in train right now, maybe he's doing it, right? RJM's doing it.
And that's what RJM Engineering is designing.
I spoke with Jeff Maiden this morning, and he suggested that we sit down with them and with Andy Stone and go over what needs to happen specifically at that entrance. Just so everything's coordinated and so that Andy Stone is happy with what we're doing and it meets what he, meets the requirements that he wants to see.
As it stands now, there's no second.
No, I'll say.
I didn't hear your motion, because you started it.
The motion is to move to approve conditional acceptance based on proper curb cut and acceptable configuration of the Montrose portion of the design.
I think you have to include the other engineering and public works, in terms of compliance with-
I assume that, I wasn't, okay, I was trying to be specific. Yeah, that all the conditions are met here.
Seconded, we can discuss that, right?
Yes, it is seconded.
There is a, this is creating a precedent where approximately one-fourth or less of the ground area is used for commercial space. I think it has to be shown to be what it is in the report that sits there. It's going to have a lot of parking on that first. I find that unacceptable.
Okay.
Too bad it wasn't part of the plan.
Well, okay. Well, as it stands now, they can go back to the original configuration, because the vote was taken on that.
I wasn't part of that. I do, you know, I think precedents are important, you were visualizing that whole street turning over this way. There are some, there wasn't a railroad behind it, there's a right of way ahead. No, I think there's, it's definitely a different location.
Yeah.
So, I, I think there is another example of town using residences on the first floor that went through the zone before, the residential system. And then the variance, the using residential, it's more on the way back. So, I mean, I guess that maybe in the future, this-
And I think Cornwell's courtside pizza also got a variance many years ago, but that was a PUD, so it had to go through the Planning Commission at the time.
Did you mention that one apartment behind the Gilt Burger Kingsley? Is that a courtside?
Is there actually a apartment on the first floor?
I thought someone mentioned there was a park, there was apartment.
Phoenix on Port?
There is parking back there on the first floor, yes. Actually, I think it's below grade.
Well, those all did go to, well, they primarily, I think, went four or five.
It was a five.
Would it appease you to add that the commercial space remains commercial? Well, I did on the last one that we did.
I thought so. I don't know, this one is just a commercial. Do you have three votes?
No, we may not have three votes. We haven't voted.
So you want to add the, in compliance with the city water?
Yes, yes.
And I would have to have the commercial space remains commercial, copy that.
You getting that, Charlene, for the record?
Okay, so, reading this again, hopefully a file on time here, move to approve, move to approve on the conditions of proper curb cut, acceptance, acceptable configuration of the Montrose portion of the design, and the compliance with city and water, with city water and sewer, and that the commercial space remain commercial in nature.
She wanted the under, the Montrose and under parking as well. I mean, that's still under design, isn't it?
I thought the first floor was designed already, the underneath was.
It's a curb, the curb.
See, that would be this one right here.
And you, you, I hear what you're saying when you picked out the pieces, let's see, I would want to include engineering and public works, not just water, division of water and sewer, because there are other street and storm-
All recommendations.
Right.
Come on, I thought you were going to have fun with this.
Since we can't entertain, we have to get through this first, then we're putting off the idea of waiting to-
That's why the motion's in place. So we vote it up or down? If you don't think, if you think you need more information, we vote it down.
Okay. So, there's a-
Why don't we have Charlene repeat what was said?
Yeah, there's a move.
Charlene, do you have that down? As a motion?
Paul Wild moved to approve the Title 41 project with the condition of proper curb cut, acceptable configuration of the Montrose portion of the design, compliance with engineering and public works, and all other staff comments, and the commercial space shall remain commercial. And RJ second.
Is that how everybody likes it? Reads it? That's what we'll be in a minute.
I'm good with that. Nancy, you're good with that? Okay, well, that's fine. Okay, we received a second.
That was you.
I'll second it.
I saw it.
I'm sorry, I'm lost in all the hubbub here. Well, all in favor of approving this motion, say aye.
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 And oppose? Okay, three to one.
Okay, so it's been approved. Now the homework has to go over to you.
That concludes that for the time being. The communications of Madison Heights project, Soul and Bloom, would they like to come forward or just update us on that project?
Okay, that's really a diversified properties is really the correct practice. Do the planning commissioners have any documents up there?
I don't.
Really?
No, I have nothing.
Communications.
We don't have any thing on it. I don't think-
I got two here, yes, Paul.
Haven't seen it yet. Bring it on up. This is the same old thing, right? Madison Heights. It's back again. This would be number three, third time? Okay.
Three's the time, man.
John, I got a short statement, maybe I'll just take a statement and ask you a positive question.
Oh, my, my, my.
I'll take one.
This shows your new figure.
See?
See, you might not like that. You got like nine variants.
I don't care. Say whatever you got to say. Say what you got to say. Okay.
Mr. Bloom, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. This is a very short statement. Thank you once again for reviewing and considering our project now known as the Madison Heights subdivision. As you know, the project's been reviewed and approved several times in the past, and the good news is that it remains substantially the same today as in past approvals. One of the reasons we have not moved forward with previously approved plans is due to extensive and continuing analysis of location, its topographical challenges, market conditions, and our resulting perception of highest and best use. Our understanding of the Athens market indicates that in this neighborhood, the desire of most potential residents is a fee simple, single-family detached ownership. Fee simple ownership being one residence on a single lot offers the greatest access to a diversity of financing options for future residents of the neighborhood. The current and ongoing complexities of the mortgage market cause new condominium development, construction process, and end financing to have become increasingly problematic for potential residents. In fact, our experience on the brokerage side of our business indicates that most future neighborhood residents are simply looking for a detached, single-family structure on their own lot in a neighborhood setting of architectural and value consistency, and this newest plan offers exactly that. In this newest request, the basics of previously approved plans remain the same. Same basic infrastructure, same amount of residences, same amount of residents and vehicles. The ingress and egress issues with the private road remain the same as previously discussed and will be incorporated into the subdivision request. We are further willing and have provided footprints of each potential building on each lot to assure the commission of what the development intent is. And our goal is to construct seven total residences, and again, we're very comfortable showing their approximate location and footprint on these lots to demonstrate the ultimate outcome of construction. And while we recognize numerous accommodations will need to be considered in regard to public street frontage setbacks, lot square footage, and more, I want to reiterate, this plan is the same number of residents, residences, residents, and vehicles as in previous approvals. And while we recognize it's somewhat innovative, innovative as subdivision regulations go, we feel the spirit and commitment to single-family development in this neighborhood is appropriate.
Since it's been so long, could you just catch me up on the number of total residences that you were expecting, number of parking spaces, and also what the height was going to be?
Currently with this request?
Yes.
There noted on that plan, seven residences, and they're numbered.
Okay.
Okay, seven independent fee simple lots.
As far as the height?
Do you know the height of the building? Two stories. Two stories.
Okay, two stories?
Yeah.
The other thing that I think some people had talked about earlier, would this again be incorporated in your new plans, is at one time, there was ingress egress at the bottom end of Madison, and I think we had talked about just restricting that to an ingress?
We did, we did. We, with our last approve, with our last approval, there was a discussion about limiting turning, only, you know, not turning left at the bottom there. That all remains the same, and we haven't changed any of what was formerly approved, that ingress and egress and the road all remain the same. It's a private road.
Right. What issues on the slippage did, or you talked about, I guess, the patent side, has there ever been any issue of slippage in that area, or, okay?
No, we never, no, we've never had any issues there whatsoever. I think what you might be referring to is that city-owned land that's further down the road. We've never had on this site any evidence of any instability.
Okay.
It's solid. You might be thinking about Grosvenor Street.
Alexander.
Alexander, thank you.
And Green.
So the previous incarnation of this was a plan you developed, and you were talking about the same number of houses, same footprint, if my memory is correct?
Right, the previous, the last approved plans called for attached housing in a condominium setting.
Okay.
One of the condominium-related issues that we're significantly aware of, the financing vehicles that are currently available in the secondary market have become increasingly problematic on the condominium side. There will, fee simple ownership, which is obviously the simplest form of a lot with a house, provides the greatest number of ultimate financing vehicles for any resident who ultimately would purchase there. The fee simple ownership candidly allows for development to occur, development to occur methodically, in other words, once the infrastructure is developed, the capacity to go in and build a residence or two residents is, we would be capable of doing that and selling at that point and bringing residents into that development. Just the entire condominium financing issue has become really pretty ugly. So that's one of the major, that's a major driver for us. The secondary driver has been, that we just determined based on our experience, that if we're going to develop that property, the end user is primarily a family or a couple that most likely, or an individual that most likely will like a lot and a home. And this is the way for us to accomplish that. This is a little more of a rendering of when you're looking at these four here. This is kind of what the-
I think you should see.
Okay.
Garages in the front?
Excuse me?
Are these garages in the front?
Yes.
The new way-
And that's in four we've done, is we've taken, taken, if you look at numbers one through five, the approved plan we have has number, has one through five as a, more of a common building. What we've done is we've taken those one through five and spread them out into individual units. That's, that's the essence of the change. Six and seven are the same.
Okay, so this is a B1 zone, still. Still. What you're seeing here is that this, you're talking about dividing yourself, I forget.
Seven lots.
Seven lots. If this was an R1, what I thought, was it 8,000 square feet for?
Well, if I may, I got a whole list, and I'll just go from there. I believe this will fall under, even though it is in the subdivision regs, it'll be a PUD because it does have established footprint of where the buildings are going to be. There's numerous variances that they're going to have to obtain, and Mary, you are touching on one of them. It is a B1 adjoining R1. Currently, our code does allow the, um, the B1 zone to allow residential of the least restrictive residential zone that it abuts, in this case, R1. So, but pending some of our discussions in the B zones, I just wanted to bring that forward. It will require, like I said, numerous variances. Minimum project area, two acres. This is only 1.185.
That's for a PUD.
Right. And which I believe this will be a PUD.
It was that way before.
Correct.
Okay.
The 20% of land reserved for common open space will be required, or a variance granted for it that it doesn't have it. Each lot width is required to be 66 feet. They have four of seven of them, will probably require a variance for this, these seven lots. Setbacks, I don't know yet the parameters of where the buildings are going to be setting, but in all likelihood, they're going to be looking at front yard setbacks, side, probably coverage requirements, and rear. Lot sizes, 8,000 square foot is required in R1. Five of the seven lots here will require a variance if they do not meet that. Again, then we've discussed many a times, the driveway access often approved street. That this access, let me get these words right, easement of access is a concern here as well. It'd have to be some sort of a, like we've done in the county, the maintenance agreements set up amongst the property owners that would have to be agreed to. But the access road itself is only 10 foot wide. Our code minimum requirement is 20 foot. Plus, it is abutting, or the actual access is not even on property they own, it's on an adjoining piece of property. So, that makes it even...
With an easement of perpetuity.
With an easement.
Yeah.
So, there are a number of variances that will be required for this project to go through as it is proposed this time.
Now, if you go back to stating that it's a PUD, and we've already approved it previously, what were the different variances that were required?
On the old one?
I know that we talked about the private access easement because we reached a point where this was approved under the different configuration.
But that's it, it'd be under one ownership as a PUD. This is, you're talking about seven different people trying to maintain a road.
Well, we do plan, there will be an HOA, a homeowners association established for the purpose of that, for the purpose of maintenance, the purpose of providing liability coverage for the road, and for paying the real estate taxes for that portion of the roadway. So there will have to be an HOA in order to maintain that road because of the fact that it is a private road.
There are four other properties that already exist under those conditions on that road currently. So we're not, we're not really reinventing the wheel here. That situation already exists.
And I guess saying variance may not be, the PUDs allow for you to alter and change setbacks and requirements and such by just bringing it to your attention, that there will be some alterations to what ball controls require. But the PUDs allow you to do that specifically.
You, you were talking about the whole B1, R1, what have you. Isn't this similar to what we approved on Hickory?
That was in a...
B3.
B3. Is that a B3?
B2.
And it abutted?
R1. It was an R1 up the hill. Yeah.
Different topography.
I hear you, and I know that you didn't like that one. I mean, you talked about a buffer zone or what have you, but you actually toured it recently, and it's, it's a really nice project.
Compared to what it's around at, no doubt.
No, this, this project is certainly a more residential in spirit and in feeling than what we have approved. You know, and we can certainly get into the specifics of the variances and et cetera, but the bigger picture here is that this is going to be more of like a residential neighborhood, which I think is more in keeping with the neighborhood. And the actual density is exactly the same. The amount of garages are the same. Everything is the same. It's just, we've taken this cluster and we've spread it apart to give everybody their own individual house, which we feel is a, is an important amenity here.
John, you kept mentioning lot coverage. I heard it before. What is the concern there?
The, each individual, again, it's, it's not necessarily variance, but just bringing it to your attention that, um, that 30%, 60% are lot coverage rules. The code reads that residential use is any use permitted and is regulated in a residential district adjoining the B1 zone. And if there are adjoining two or more different categories of resident zones, regulations of least restrictive residence zone shall prevail. So this is a permissible use in the B1 since it abuts an R1 in it, but it has to meet the R1 regulations. So, but the PUDs allow you to reduce those regulations, so.
But they would not exceed the 60% lot coverage, yeah?
No, no. But I don't know on the structure if it's going to exceed 30% because we don't have a footprint established onto the site or property yet, so.
But that's only if there, this was looked as a PUD. My impression of PUDs is that it's under one ownership. I know we've branched away from that, but this is, to me, is...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Plan you'd developments?
Would be under one ownership?
Yes. Again, my concern is this ceases to be, you know, even if you have a homeowners association in the mix there, that just doesn't mean you don't get along with your neighbor and, or somebody doesn't approve their property. They don't, they never add money to the upgrade of the property or the shared road. In other words, you've got seven different people there, and you've got one person says, I don't need to fix the road. I don't want to fix the road. Then it becomes a...
In a sense, what we have approved, which is condominium-style ownership, all of those owners are obligated to do the same thing by paying a condominium fee and creating a condominium association, which the intent of that association, as you know, would be to maintain not only the road, but the grounds and the exterior of the unit. So this is less, I don't know if the word cumbersome is correct, but this is the only item of shared maintenance that would be required among seven property owners. And bearing in mind, there are additional property owners that have advantage of using this property without participating in any costs because they have easements of perpetuity that were granted, you know, 100 years ago.
And they're traveling daily on those roads, the road we know.
And the road exists.
Yeah, the road exists, and that's how it's been used up to this point, you know?
You know, it's a very low-density project.
Ooh, I don't know about that.
I mean, if we looked at this as an R1 straight out, you'd be able to fit maybe two houses on it, max.
That's exactly what I was going to ask. Why don't you do three houses and then six and seven? It'd be closer to, I mean, 43 feet for a good new house for a lot.
I'm sorry.
43 feet wide in a, in a property? That's pretty narrow.
You're talking about the lot size?
Yeah, the lot size. And then the center also. I mean, having, living on a house that's on a slope like this.
The prior approved plan, the residents were 22 feet.
The prior approved plan was a PUD.
Right.
One owner.
Not one owner. Not one owner.
One entity.
One entity. You mean a condominium association?
Still have seven people, seven residences.
It's still with seven residences.
I'm watching Meadow Lane unravel, have, I've spent quite a bit of time at the zoning board right now, trying to figure out whether it's a PUD, fee simple housing, with shared walls, et cetera, et cetera. I've watched this as a Howard, Harold Square turned out from a PUD to fee simple as well. It almost...
How's that worked out?
How does it work out? I'd have to ask somebody on the street, wouldn't I?
Yeah. Let's not go there.
Yeah, okay, precisely. No, I think it worked out nice. I think it looks nice.
Well, one of the responses is that, you know, part of, you know, I don't want to raise the flag here, part of what our intention has been, and to address the density issue, has been if we are capable of locating, I mean, we're in the development business, so let's get that out there. If you're capable of locating an area that might be suitable to provide residential development as the comprehensive plan is called for, infill, which is the nature of virtually any type of development that's going to occur inside the city itself. I mean, there's virtually no, with the exception of the 40-plus percent of the city property that the university has. So yes, this is creative. Yes, it's innovative. And yes, there is a density issue. Our, our sense, and this is only a sense from our experience, for whatever that's worth, is that that density is a, is a relative non-issue to the end user, which are the residents. The location is of such interest because of the fact that, you know, you've got walking distance to town, it's on that side of Athens, which is attractive to many buyers, that, yeah, yeah. You know, the density is always an issue, but at the same time, that's, we've been working on it for a number of years and had a number of different variations. We think the density, whether they're attached or detached, it shouldn't make a difference. And given the attached density with seven residents, residences, seven detached, does not seem like a giant stretch to us.
This graphic that you're showing us right here, this one right here. If I look at these driveways, that's on the uphill side.
And I think that we have to look, speaking from my own neighborhood, not that, that's a negative ex... I can speak very loud, actually.
Okay.
I will shout if I have to.
You don't need to shout.
Speaking from my neighborhood, and the nod of traffic at the bottom of the hill, I'm much, I'm very glad it's not 24 anymore because that was, I think, the original proposal. I mean, we seem to do that a lot around here. Mr. Wasserman did it. You know, I mean, it, you know, let's kind of reel back and meet the neighborhood needs. But even so, I mean, you're going to be adding more cars to the neighborhood, and it may be just ducky from a development point of view, but the cars are going to still be there where there right now is open space, and I know it's just fine as it is. But I would like to say that there are some externalities that will accompany this runoff and access. The end of this driveway is a nightmare to my way of thinking.
Well, essentially, though, with, with eventually...
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself there?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm...
Get up towards the mic, either.
Please, the podium.
Well, when this is, when this project is complete...
I'm sorry, could you just identify?
Bruce Wyethworth is one of the partners in the first five properties. And when this project is complete, there won't be a flower shop there. There will not be constant travel by that white van that, that if you, you know, you live in the neighborhood, you've seen that all the time. There won't be customers going in and out. There will be, the whole, the whole essence of this community is to store your car. I mean, that's one of the wonderful things about this, is you walk to work or ride a bike or walk down to the Village Bakery or something. So, you know, we haven't done any traffic studies, but seven residences, all with appropriate parking and garages, are ultimately going to create on a daily basis, less vehicular traffic than exists right now.
I'll tell you in a couple of years if that's so. Because actually, the, the flower shop has very little impact on that because of the way that parking sits on the side of the road, but, you know, that...
True, but, but that, but you're actual vehicles entering and exiting, I think ultimately it, it won't be, you know, a lot more, I can't guarantee it.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to be so argumentative. What I'd like to do is ask also, as you're preparing your next set of plans, is that, not that lot too long and wide and skinny? Isn't, you know, isn't there a rule somewhere in subdivision regs about?
One to three.
One to three? Okay. Because it's 41. Is it just over the edge?
It's really nice, that, that piece, though.
Really nice?
I'd encourage if this is, that everybody takes a trip again and goes and looks at that property. I mean, I could see where you'd want to put a house there, I guess is what they'll say.
Oh, it's a nice view, it's, it's up above.
Snyder's down below.
Oh, that's really not that much of an issue.
You'd sort of overlook them, huh?
Yeah, and there's a lot, there's huge trees there. It's, it's really not too bad.
Yeah, I think the whole site is very pretty, actually. I hate to see it.
Yeah, that's what you started with. But the private access easement, I mean, we've, we, and we'll have to, I've asked, John, if we can get the previous and what we did, and I know that you weren't part of that commission at the time, but we worked out that roadway issue, so.
I think, yeah, council try.
Okay, realize, if it goes as a PUD, it will end up in council's bear the wick.
It goes as a subdivision too, right?
What?
Even if it goes as a subdivision.
Yes, it would as well.
But we're, yeah, are we really ready to, I mean, are we ready to pass on this?
No, no, this is, this is not even case yet. The idea is that, you know, so we, we voice our concerns and go from there. Again, I like the concept. I, I'm looking at it again, and I guess my concern along this level is that if this was a subdivision, it would require a slew of variances.
Yes.
I worry about the fact that it would be divided up and we'd have maintenance issues along the way for all the easements and all the public common spaces. If we start looking even at the footprint, as I say, John was saying, in terms of, you know, space coverage, lot coverage, tree coverage, once you start saying this is now divided up, there's, there just seems to be a concatenarization of variances that are going to be required. Again, I understand what you're saying. It's, it is close to town, it's, it's what most people probably want on some level. The question is, you know, if we were to start from scratch, what would this look like? I mean, to my mind, this is a substitution of a, of a PUD or, you know, condo situation that we've kind of morphed into now. I know, you don't, you, I see difference in terms of how the maintenance is going to occur with, you know, seven different neighbors who may, may not get along. And I guess I'd be more concerned with the strength of your homeowners association and the language that, how well that hangs together as a legal document. And I, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know, and I don't know this.
Well, we would be happy to present a draft, obviously, of whatever agreement would be required and have our attorney provide it so that you can review it. And I think candidly, as we all know, subdivision regulations, and these are only as powerful as people are willing to go to enforce them. And, and the reality is, you can have the strongest subdivisions recorded, and still, it takes an action by a neighbor to initiate, you know, if you have a renegade participant, it's still going to take a legal action. That's the reality. It's not, it's not the law, it's a private agreement. So therefore, people are bound by that agreement. I don't know how, what else can be done on the private side to be integrated into a, a homeowners association document to provide, for lack of a better word, more teeth.
You would, would you say a condo agreement is, has more teeth than what you're talking about homeowners agreement?
I, I can't really respond to that. I'm not sure that it really is because you're into an action again. You're into a private action in the event of a, in the event of a non-payment, you're into a private action. It's already off record, and there's a legal procedure, but you're, you know, you're, you're into a private action nonetheless because, you know, it's not a city street, they're not disregarding a city ordinance, it's a privately operated situation.
Do you see this homeowners association having a built-in fee, condo fee, so to speak?
Not a condo fee, but there would have to be a yearly fee based on an evaluation of what maintenance concerns, ongoing replacement concerns to the surface of, of the... of what maintenance concerns, ongoing replacement concerns to the surface of the roadway over time, as in a sinking fund for a condo association. And then the other item would need to be addressed would be, there'd have to be a liability insurance factored in as to an occurrence taking place on that property. So yes, there would be a yearly fee, that fee would be to each of the seven owners of the property ongoing.
Private access easement, I know, at least in the county, we're required not to be recorded.
Yeah.
So, so that would be the thing. You know, I understand what you're saying, but it would become the legal document attention.
Failure to pay on a fee is, the association has a legal right to place a lien on property as well. So if you don't pay your homeowner's fee or your condo fee, the association places a lien on your piece of real estate.
Can I say, so, this really becomes kind of a hybrid of a PUD, a development, a subdivision. And what we've become very aware of, well, actually, the issue with, that just happened to Meadow Lane, and the reason we've had discussions with John about this is to try to specify where the buildings will be. I mean, in a normal subdivision, if you're within the proper setbacks, you can do anything you want, but we recognize that there's some proximity issues here, that these aren't really big lots, and it's important for us to establish before anything starts, basically within a couple of feet, where the building's going to be and where the building will remain. And if language is necessary to make sure that the same thing doesn't happen that just did happen and, or has continued to.
No alterations, reditions.
That's our effort. I mean, basically, we plan on building all of these separate houses. We plan on making sure that everyone knows where they're going to be, that's recorded, and everybody knows upfront, knows that they just can't change it. I just think it's important when houses are that close, that somebody doesn't try to put a 20-foot addition on a piece of property, you know, on a building that already exists. So I think that's a really important addition to what we're, you know, will provide.
Any other questions or comments from the public or from the front, or from the commissioners? Okay, so this is.
TV is the police.
Okay, so, do we need to table? It was just.
This is just, they just tell me what's going on, they'll be back at us.
Okay, great.
So we'll see.
So we're coming back?
I guess.
I remember when you guys had elevators on the side.
Is there anything that we need to incorporate from today's communication into our next meeting that we need to be aware of?
Are you going to come to our next meeting?
Pardon me?
Were you going to come to our next meeting? We haven't defined when that is, that's why I'm trying to.
We're just asking, based on today's communication, is there feedback from the planning commission? Essentially, that goes to the code office to us regarding our next step? Or are we just coming forward with our plan at the next meeting to see whether it's approved or not? That's my question.
As a planned unit development, as a planned unit development, section 210911 basically says the first step is a pre-application meeting. The developer shall meet the zoning administrator and commission, that would be this body, prior to the submission of the preliminary plan. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss early and informally the purpose and effect of this chapter, and the criteria and standards contained herein, and to familiarize the developer with zoning and other applicable regulations. So.
Okay, we're familiar.
We could either say that this is the pre-application meeting.
This is what we're doing here.
If this is the pre-application meeting, then the next step would be 210912, which outlines the preliminary plan application requirements. At that time, once that application is submitted and deemed acceptable, we would move to 210913, which is a notice of a public hearing. So the next meeting, we could either have another informal, or we could move forward and begin, once they have provided a preliminary plan to our code office, we can start with a notice of a public hearing upon the acceptance of that preliminary plan. That, of course, we need to do, you know, 14 days, public notice to the property owners, et cetera, and then move forward with a preliminary plan here.
You've got the plan in front of you.
Yeah, the plan's been submitted.
Actually, that plan is in a, is pretty much in a final plat.
Okay.
I mean, as far as if you look at the information that is requested on application, everything.
I've got the fee in, we've got to do the PUD application. I'd like to see another plan of this scale on here with the footprint of the buildings, the contours, the utilities, everything that you did before attached with this. I think you'll see, if you read through the application, those are all the things that are going to be required for a PUD. So we'll get a little bit more defined, other than a sketch that we have here, to conclude, so it'd be a two-page document in essence.
But that's already, so you just want these on there?
Well, but this gets recorded. Of course, that's not bad to add on there, it's recorded too. We found that, yeah, we learned that here recently, so, okay, we'll get together on that.
Okay, fine. All right, I think we know what we're doing.
Okay.
Hello, don't quote me on it, please.
That concludes communication? Thank you very much.
No.
No?
Well, but this project, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I passed out a little bit in our prior to the meeting, a procedural for, procedure for approval alteration, Title 41. I think this is very preliminary for you to take a look at prior to our next meeting, if you wish. What this is doing is eliminating the situations that you saw happening, for example, today. Trying to set it up, right now, Title 41, as you saw today, you approved with conditions. This proposal establishes a determined submittal date that'll give May basically one week to review the submittal, to make sure it meets the requirements of the Title 41 application. At that point, if, once I determine that it has met the requirements, it has everything on the drawings that is required, then it would be distributed to staff. At that point, staff has two weeks to review the drawings as submitted, and at that point, two weeks later, then, they would come, the applicant would come to the planning commission for an open communication, where we would then give them, or they can have them sooner, if we have them, the comments from the staff. At that point, then, they have basically two weeks to complete the revisions on the drawings and get them back to us, instead of coming in, like they did today, with final drawings that no one's seen yet. And then that, they can get the drawings back to us, that then we can give them back, have a chance to review them, before they come back to the planning commission for a final approval with all of the revisions that staff have talked about on the drawings and reviewed by staff. So that's what this, a pre-established calendar, basically, would allow or provide for the applicant. They would know the exact process of what dates they would have to have their applications in and stuff, revisions to us to be on, when they would receive their approvals. If, for example, they didn't have any, any comments from staff at the open communication and everything was good to go, I suppose approval could be granted at that time by the planning commission. But usually, there are comments from staff, so.
Okay.
I think what this is doing is just eliminating just what we saw today, and we have been seeing quite frequently, is where applicants are coming in with their revisions on the day they're looking for their final approval, and staff has not had a chance to review it yet. So.
Gives everybody involved with the process clear timelines with when they should expect an approval, makes sure that the planning commissioners all have adequate time to review the plans, makes sure that the administration has adequate time to review the plans and give feedback to the developer or the applicants, so that we're not at the very last minute all scurrying and trying to catch up and learn things at the very last minute so that, and then forcing the planning commissioners to try to make a decision based on last-minute information. That's at least my interpretation of why we would want to do this.
If you were to look at 4104E right now, it basically is saying, stating that the planning commission shall preliminary approve the site plan subject to conditions, modifications, restrictions, upon 15, or 15 days after the date of the report has been submitted. So this is changing that a little bit, so that that is not required to happen without full staff report and comments on everything that's been submitted to us.
Okay.
Yes.
So the pressure's going to be on you.
Yes.
Because.
Andy and I and.
Right, but I mean, you know, because what happened today wasn't your fault.
Right, right.
It definitely was imposing, in a way.
For the stuff to come in there that, when we sit down here, I hadn't seen these drawings. It makes it difficult.
You're never going to take a 15-day vacation, is that the other question?
I'll let them know ahead of time and.
Well, I, well, maybe you want to let them know when you're going out of town, but, you know, maybe 15 days is a bit little, short-term.
Two weeks between each one, then.
I mean, considering the investments that are being made, and you have somebody coming up with a plan that clearly went through all the process and then didn't work out, apparently, in the, in the public opinion arena, and then they're back again. I mean, you know, maybe they should have done it better the first time. I mean, just an idea.
Paul summed it up best a long time ago, it's not asking a lot to spend 45 days on a project that'll be there for 45 years.
You betcha. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to go ahead with any other reports that you might have before we go to Paul?
Well, since I'm already talking, if we want to go into that.
Just one other thing, as, as a communication, I believe in your packet, there is a letter from Attorney Gerald Mulica relating to the rezoning request for the Far East Side, just expressing that the property owner at 6 and 8 Charles Street is opposed to having his property rezoned. Seems like that should be fit in with general communications.
Okay.
John?
And the other thing I didn't see, shy, I don't know if we got it last time, I don't recall, these letters of support for that Wasserman project redo.
Were there any?
Yes, there were two.
Ooh, it says.
And.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if I even have any read.
It's past. Right, it's probably fairly moved, but I just.
There's one from the owner of Athens Bikes and another one from Busy Day Market, I believe.
We do have those and those are in the BZA file.
Okay.
I do remember that now.
Okay. Paul, is that your report, or did you have anything else to add?
How much time do we have? I have 20 minutes worth of reports, or I have two minutes? Well, depending on the.
Well, since I need to be.
Two minutes, okay.
Yeah.
Real quick, there's a town hall meeting on June 26th, that's this upcoming Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the community center. This is a response to the February meeting with this dialogue between citizens and the mayor.
It's at 6 o'clock.
I have, before you leave, RJ and Nancy, I do have a brief summary of the deferred maintenance projects that Ohio University is going to be doing, based on an approval from the Board of Trustees and the state. Just a summary of roofing projects and all of that, so you're aware of things you might see on campus over the next year or so. I'll leave it at that.
Good job. John, anything else?
Very quickly, the last, BZA meeting last Tuesday, 27 Meadow Lane, as we discussed many times over and talked about today, was denied 5 to 0. So that project is, wherever it goes from there, I don't know. And 100 Longview Heights, Camp Rehain, they requested a conditional use permit for a private club recreational use in an R1, and it was approved 5 to 0. They are doing some renovations to their existing structure out there. Last Thursday, Shade Tree Commission, just so you know, there were four Title 41 cases that have been recent that went through, and all four of those were approved. They were the Green Leaf Landscape Project on Columbus Road, the 152-154 Mill Street Project that has yet to come back in for finalization here, 63 North Court, the old Gator Building, when they tear down the front of the building, they will be planting some trees in the sidewalk in front of the building to coincide with their street landscape plan uptown. And then the 22 West Stimson Project that we just went over was reviewed last Thursday as well. So, I've got all the notes for all of those, and that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Luce, is there anything else that you'd like to address that's not on the agenda today?
I would like to express my disappointment with the decision that was made earlier. I guess I'm hopelessly naive, I tend to believe that our city code is the code and not just general guidelines. I'm frustrated when I read lines like residential uses are permitted only, it doesn't say kind of, it says only on the second floor and above. That seems pretty straightforward to me, but now it apparently means, well, it can be up to three-quarters of the first floor. I believe that, once again, this planning commission, at least from my point of view, from my limited understanding of what this is supposed to be about, has once again granted a variance that was the rightful authority of the Board of Zoning Appeals. This was a non-conforming use and should have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think you've established a precedent that even if one quarter of the ground floor of any building that has a business in a B3 zone is a business, then we can start putting apartments and anything else we want in the remaining three-quarters of the space. That's a little better than what was granted previously, which essentially was that all of the ground floor is essentially either for residential use or we call parking spaces businesses. As far as I can see, any business in town can reduce its floor space to one quarter of its space and can now use the rest of the space as residential use. So if the Athens County Historical Society Museum gets desperate enough, we can make the museum the front quarter of the building, and we can rent out the rest of our space to make money. That's what you've said. Either our codes mean what they say, or they don't. I am, I like people on this board personally very much. It is not personal with me, but I am very, very disappointed in the decision that you made.
Thank you, Mr. Luce.